Go ahead and spoken meeting, um please silence and shut off cell phones and and pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Albertson, do you have anything?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, even Kevin?
I have work to do.
Uh.
We need to spoof his camera one of these times.
Yeah.
So he's gonna let's do some weird stuff in there.
No, let's not do that.
Um, that would stay a burn that this set down.
Yeah, so, uh, any additions or deletions?
Mm-hmm, we need to add Christmas for kids, so.
Sounds good. Is there, uh, anything else? Commissioner Albertson, did you have anything?
I have nothing.
Okay. Alright, I'll let that be. Um. The first item, of course, uh, we'll go ahead and deal with Christmas for kids.
Thank you, um, I wasn't able to get ahold of Ronnie, um, but Ronnie Junior would be happy to come give you an update after this year's event. So, Christmas for kids is, has been a voluntary effort that Junior Gabriel put together. It's become wildly successful. A lot of presents this year, they're doing hayrides and games and smore roasts and like all kinds of stuff out there in addition to the gifts. They have been loosely connected with inner, inner court family services. Um, and I'm not sure exactly what their insurance coverage was if they're planning. They need to be covered. Um, we're proposing that the county sponsor that event. It wouldn't require anything else, we're already providing the venue. Um, it just needs to be, we saying that it's our event. We're going to allow Junior to and his volunteers to continue to operate that, put on that event as, as they have been doing. And that would afford them liability coverage for free, it wouldn't cost us anything. So, all I need, all they would need is the board of commissioners to make a decision that, that they will sponsor this event.
Okay.
On an ongoing basis, I guess.
Any thoughts from the board?
I think we should do. You know, if the players change, we probably would need to revisit, but yeah. But it sounds like it's on really good track.
Well, and I think, you know, you probably need, um, to speak with that group annually to see what, what they have planned out there, because, I mean, the hayride thing is okay, we've got a really low trailer. It, it's, seems to be safe, but, but you would wanna know what, what kind of events they were putting on, have some kind of control over that. Just that big.
It's gotta be safer than being stranger.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't think you have something.
Yeah, I was going to add that they do the event here, but they also take presents to the other community centers in the county. So it's like helping the whole county too.
So it makes sense, you know, kind of as a county life.
Mm-hmm. I think it's been so successful that I don't think Junior had any idea that it would grow like that, but community's gotten behind it and really supported it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, last year we filled up the entire memorial hall pretty much, and I mean, it was.
Yeah, crazy.
It was, it was a little bit crazy unloading those boxes and sliding them down the tables through the window and everything else just trying to get them into the building. It was, uh, we had a lot of help down there doing it, but it was still, it was a madhouse.
Didn't we give away like six hundred gifts or something? It was something crazy like.
Yeah, I don't know if the number is, uh, it'd be good to get an annual update from Junior.
Yeah, is there any kind of, uh, do we want any of this in writing basically? As we kind of do this?
Um, we can do, um, let me, let me think about that, uh, because we do need to have some kind of use agreement.
Yeah.
Using the facility.
Especially if we're gonna go back over it, you know, every year, you know, and kind of know exactly what we are covering.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I'll put that together.
Okay.
Before this year's, you think?
Sounds good.
So while we're talking about insurance, on another subject, Justin Farrell's deal with the, that's, I'm not on the way. Do you have any insurance for those guys?
Well. Still working on it. Um, I've had several conversations with city counties director and I, I, we're talk, we're talking again this morning. Um, it's, it's becoming a lot more clear now what exactly this Solomond Conservation District is looking for. Um, so I think we'll have this worked out today and I'll attend their meeting tomorrow morning to make sure that all their questions are answered and we understand exactly what they're looking for. But, doesn't sound like they are going to be able to join our group. Um, city counties trust is put together through LOC and AOC. You have to be a member of one of those to get to join. They're a special district, they are a member of special districts. SDAO does the same thing that city county does. They provide insurance to a lot of little districts all around the state and pull them into a large group.
And they typically don't compete.
They don't compete. They, they gave us a, you know, there is some counties that have, um, allowed the Solomond Conservation District to join in their health insurance. And Plaquemines County was one of them, but they don't use city county for health insurance. They have an outside provider, so.
Okay.
Still working on it though, and I, I'll be at their meeting tomorrow, so.
Okay.
Make sure that they've got all the answers.
And that's at ten o'clock here at the courthouse, but it just won't be in this room because we'll be having our regular session.
Right.
So, okay.
Okay. Thanks.
Alright, thank you Jay.
So Jay, real quickly. If, if city county, or C I S won't cover this, is there another avenue we can take or not?
Not that we can take, they can always go to any outside provider for three employees. That's easy to do, to shop it around, but, but their other option is exactly what we, we go to our trust that's put together by cities and counties. The trust that they have for special districts is Special Districts Association Board. They do the same thing that their sister company does. So, I'm not sure where they're getting advice from or who they've spoken to at special districts, but.
It'll be good for you to be asked, sit down, meet with them and go over this.
Yeah, we should talk about it.
Get, get some more facts and get some more straight answers, that'd be good.
Yeah.
It's not that we don't wanna take them on, it's just sounds like.
Right, I think, um, I'm assuming if, if we can help them, we want to, right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so if we can help them, we want to. Justin asked the question, you know, if they can get special districts to waive the conflict, um, will we take them on? And so I sent that question on to the director. Um, if, if they can get special districts to waive that conflict, can you or will you allow them to come into our group? And I haven't heard that answer yet, so.
So what is, I guess I'm still lost on, what is the problem with? Why can't they get insurance through the special districts?
They can get insurance through special districts.
Is it just too expensive for them?
See, that's kind of what I was understanding, is that because they only have the three people, they were wanting to be part of a larger pool. But if SDAO is actually pulling them together with all the other special districts,
They are.
the question is okay, then maybe they are getting a really good rate, but they think it's.
So the, the town of Basley.
Three.
The town of Basley, um, isn't really small.
City, right.
They're pulled with all the other cities in Oregon. And so they have a large group they can. They're not, they're not trying to ensure themselves as a group of three. They're a small district that is pulled with all the other special districts in Oregon. So I don't, I'm not sure exactly what, what kind of quotes they've been given or what kind of plan designs they, are, are the options, so we just need to sit down and talk about it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you Jay, sounds good, thank you. Um, next up, uh, Anne Crumright, funding update for assistant district attorney position.
Good point, good one. Money that, the funds, the funds that I think that we would be looking at with this, um, deputy DA position, obviously is general fund dollars. And, and so property taxes, Pilts, um, soon to be more solar down the road with things even up north. The other big pot of money that we've talked about quite a bit is the local assistance fund, which was approved in the big ARPA Act, um, with Senator Wyden's push. Those dollars, um, go to SRS and Pilts counties. And right now it's looking like Lake County would receive about three point seven million, but it's only a two-year program unless it gets reauthorized. The hangup at the moment, this is the latest news we've heard from, uh, Naco, Jonathan Shuffold staff talking with Treasury. That, the, the treasury, the US Department of Treasury is swamped right now with ARPA money, CARES Act money, let's see, um, and their feeling is all they have to do is follow the federal fiscal year, which means those dollars may not be sent out to counties until right at the end of the federal fiscal year, which is September of next year, September of twenty-two. We're asking Naco and Wyden and, and everybody else to really push that and say, hey, most counties end with a June fiscal year. So we'd like to get it in the fiscal year in, we're in right now. I feel like those are probably the most, um, easy accessible dollars for a new position. We can fund it with property tax, you know, we can fund it with our revenues we have right now. It just cuts, you know, it just shrinks that beginning fund balance, it just kind of does those things. So I guess what I'm saying is, it's, we, we'll, it's doable, we can make it work for sure. Um, the timing of the local assistance fund could put us in a pinch, uh, for what that budget looks like, um, next year. Instead of having a high beginning fund balance, we actually just have revenue, like, like we would, like we budgeted this year. But it is, it is doable and it seems very needed. So I think we, we figure out ways to make that work, since the assessor just walked in. It'd be helpful if he can get some new construction on. But, um.
Also, there's future opportunities for grants?
Yeah, that, in the past, uh, District Attorney Martin, he did apply for a, I think it's a Violence Against Women's Act, but it's on a biennium and so it's closed right now. I think the next round of funding will open up in twenty-two. I have seen where several other counties have used those grant dollars to fund a deputy VA. Um, it's, it's, you know, you just make sure that that work, you know, Violence Against Women, that deputy VA is handling a lot of those cases. And so then you're, you're directing dollars that way and work that way and getting reimbursed through that grant or that. We do have, uh, BOKA money, which is the, um, Victims of Crime Act grant that runs through the VA's department. Typically, it's hard for us to spend all of those grant dollars, but it, it is really geared towards, you know, helping victims. It can't have a lot to do with prosecution. So that's why it's been hard for us to fund. In fact, it's, it's really clear, you can't fund prosecution activities with BOKA money. So, but the Violence Against Women Act, because it's okay to prosecute against that.
Right.
That would be a more suitable line of funding to go after. And it is on a biennium, so if it opens up in twenty-twenty-two, there's some potential there to offset some of these other dollars.
And I, we're going, I think we're gonna have, uh, the big project up north on solar, I think that's gonna come online, I bet we see those dollars in twenty-three.
Well, yeah, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay. So, you know, there's, there's different things on the horizon.
Yeah.
Uh, even Red Rock Community Service, you know, when Red Rock gets up and going, that's another source of income that we have not budgeted, you know, we're just waiting to see when that comes online, so.
But we can't afford this right now.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's, like we said, it's, it's definitely a need. We've heard it's a need for years, really, so.
Right. So Anne, uh, you talked about the, uh, timing of the local assistance fund and how it could affect us and put us in a bit of a pinch. You know, I've talked to Wyden's office to make him aware of that issue too. You know, we'd really like to see it in the fiscal year before.
Yeah. Ideally, it would have been on the same, um, funding timeline like SRS was, which typically we'd see that in March or April. I was hoping that would be like what Wyden, like what they would think of as the push and the timing of it because SRS didn't get reauthorized, so.
So are you seeing, uh, are you making a case that we should wait to see how this plays out? Or are you still saying that?
But, so, you know, we're already, by the time we got this position up and running, we would, in my mind, only be funding fifty percent of it in this fiscal year. So really, the timing of those dollars just puts us, it's, it's just, it's left, you know, it's not as big of a.
Yeah, it's not a full bill.
Exactly, so I, I think it's, it's, it's doable. I was just running some numbers, if we didn't get the local assistance fund, um, I'm, I'm looking at our beginning fund balance just right now, this is really quick, would be like one point nine million, we came in this year with two million. So it's, it's a hundred thousand dollar hit, you know, just a little bit less. Things still have to play out still. We're still seeing, we, we just got notified yesterday that our airport is going to get another round of, uh, ARPA funding. You know, so we're still seeing different federal support come through that I didn't anticipate, I didn't know. So there's things like that that still might come through that help general fund that we're already.
Another factor is, uh, deputy DAs could last six months, they could last six years, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
You just don't know, but there's a history of, uh, turnover there because it's more of an entry position, right?
Entry position, and now they're trying to move up the ladder. They're just getting experience under their feet, you know, so. Um, I don't know, I don't know what the, the range has been in other counties, if they do stay around for a while, I don't know what that pays on, what that workload looks like.
Yeah, I'm very keen on it. Good enough.
So I asked Anne to brief us on this after we had the deputy DA discussion last session, just so that we could stay on this topic and, you know, help us, right? You know, so that we don't lose it.
Anyway, well, with, uh, being that, you know, we know that we have the funding opportunity there, we have, we're, we're able to do it, I, I don't see anything wrong necessarily with writing up a job description honestly at this point, looking forward.
Right.
I think the piece that we need to discuss as commissioners was the, uh, county council part. Um, I know I'm, I'm leaning towards, uh, not going that route. Initially, I thought that might, uh, be something that we could explore, but after further discussions, I think that we would have to have those be separated.
Well, I just, I, I just think there would be, we could have conflicts of interest. We could have, if we needed county council immediately, do we have the authority to pull them off a DA job? I mean, there's so many things in there that kind of muddy the water. Um, on the deputy DA thing, I've stated before, I, I'm still struggling a bit with it. There's no doubt that we need it. My problem is, is that the state has the authority over that. Um, to me, it's like, in one way, we're paying for a state to help the state do their job better. But on the other hand is, it's our people that are suffering from.
Backlog.
backlog and possibly dismissing cases that shouldn't be dismissed because of the workload. I don't know if that's happening, but I'm just, there's some things in there that concern me a bit. You know, and we had, uh, a fellow from Deschutes County down here, he did a wonderful job for us, but I'm just, there's some concerns. Um, I just wanna make sure we, I gotta work this out in my own mind. Because we definitely need, they need the help. Um, our people deserve the help. There's just other underlying things that I'm concerned with, but.
I.
I'm, I'm not saying that, I'm not, I'm totally opposed to this at all. I'm just, I haven't worked my way through it enough to say, you hear me.
The, um, chain of command, I guess, if you will, wouldn't it be structured similar to the office manager there? So the, the deputy DA is a county employee.
Right.
But it still serves.
But under the authority of the DA, just like.
Well, the oldest supporting staff, I mean, everything else that we also, that are also our important center. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, uh.
It's just dirty water to me and it's, if we could, I guess, I need to have a talk with the DA and just say, hey, how's this gonna work? And, you know.
That's another good point, Commissioner, because, uh, we wanna make sure that some of our current programs that we have in place continue. Uh, we don't wanna see them go away. Positions are partially funded or not, through like our drug court, for example.
Our, our drug court, to me, is one of the most important deals that we have. I've seen it with my own eyes. People that were in jail when I worked there and now are.
Gives them a program.
Yeah, they're living successful lives, they're contributing to the community in a good way. Um, and if that goes, then I will not support this at all. You know, and so, the drug court is very important, uh, to our county, to me. We have people in the parole and probation, that part of their wages are paid by that. And, um, I don't want them to lose their jobs because of this, and so.
That actually brings up another potential funding source. The first drug court money we received was a Bureau of Justice grant. Um, it's fed, it was federal. So, that, you know, is another source of funding potentially to help with the deputy DA position, um, if we go after a federal grant on that drug court. So, right now I got, um, renewed with State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. It's not to the full extent that the federal was, but that's.
Is that the one that Jake, uh?
Jake and Christie Albertson, Christie Albertson helped write that first, uh, his member partnership was the Health District, the county.
I guess I'm just not as worried about the funding, 'cause I know that we can make it work.
Yeah, sure.
Mine is just making it work the most efficiently without losing any of our work programs and that our people, especially the victims, aren't taking care of in a way that they need to be. And so I guess that still has, can be worked out in my mind, so. I'm not denying the need by any means, so.
So, you know, let's have those discussions, let's, let's keep this in the forefront if we can.
Well, what I, what I think we should do, Barry, is, you know, James and I, when we were on and we didn't have the DA at all, the, the process is long. And so I wouldn't have a problem starting the process and do like Commissioner Williams said, and, you know, get a job description wrote up and see if we can start recruiting somebody, because it's not gonna happen overnight. If it happens, anything like.
Yeah, we heard the recruiting issues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, um, I, I have no problem with that and I'll work out my issues in the meantime. Um, I think we should start the process though. Um, I don't wanna let this fall through the cracks.
But at the same time, if, if we're going to be making this investment to try and make sure that he has the support necessary to do the job and everything else, and he has the help that needed, because we recognize the need is there, we also wanna make sure that he's not going to be dropping some of those other things like.
Yeah, I, 'cause if he drops drug court, like word on the street that he's talking about, I don't know. And so.
You guys could structure it though, like a regular department head that works for you guys, like Marla. And so you would have some control over the position. And then, you know, that puts that person in precarious like dual leadership role, but then they still.
It would be interesting to kind of how we would structure that, um, in relationship to Marla as well and, and to the current department head up there, to see how, you know, we.
I would think they'd be equals.
Right.
Like she would manage the position, but that person would be there to.
With certain job duties and everything else assigned.
Which is not a good sense, unfortunately.
So, I haven't thought about that too much yet, so, got to think about that.
Okay.
Anyways.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you, yeah. Good discussion. Um, next up, Dave Knowles. Um, Summer Lake ODFW pill payment.
Good morning, kids. This should be quick and easy. Prior to my arrival to the assessor's office a long time ago, the, uh, Oregon State, uh, Fish and Wildlife Department, we decided to pay pill payments in lieu of taxes, 'cause they're tax exempt. But Summer Lake Refuge area, uh, the Oregon State Fish and Wildlife has other properties in town like their office in, in Lakeview. The, that's excluded, that is exempt, that's not taxed, that's not included in this pill. This is the refuge for up in the solid area. So, I included in your package the cover letter. This, it's a standard letter we do every year, and in each account is, is, uh, invoiced on this invoice, this is mailed to them. And I need your approval to go forward with this every year. So, it's no change from the past, it's all raised up a little bit. Eight or fifty, it was up about three percent of the year. So, if you guys have any questions on this.
So, by law, they don't actually have to pay that.
No, no. They're doing this to our county for that community up there. And it's, it goes directly into that Summer Lake tax code area, distributed through that in those areas. Of course, it goes to general fund and schooling and everything else, but it does help that community.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for being on, it's awesome.
Anyway, if you have any questions, uh, ask now or through my office and we'll go through that and we'll cut and dry it straightforward.
Absolutely.
No major changes, no change play.
The, uh, last year they picked up a couple of parcels and that was gonna change from my turn. They increased it just a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, they acquisition of additional land, I mean.
So. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Happy happy talking.
No, thank you, Dave.
Where's Jay?
Where's Jay?
So, uh.
Let's bring these on.
Yeah, Jay, actually, we we did discuss.
Your.
The Christmas kids discussion already, yeah.
Oh, thanks, oh, that's the one I've begun.
We threw it.
We started nine, right?
We threw it.
Oh, no, I, he just called me this morning, and I had to drop off my rig, and I just got to the office, so I had to go to the shop, get, find the key for the other pickup.
Okay.
So, okay, what was hap- what happened?
We were.
We threw it out. No good.
Tell me.
Because you didn't show up on time. To state the case.
He didn't tell me until this morning.
Now.
Uh, no, we're we're.
It's why.
Just.
Oh, yeah.
It's a carry operation, he's gonna, he's gonna do a little bit more research and probably put something in writing.
Okay.
Uh, so we have something formal and then that each year can kind of be reviewed depending on. You know, what the actual coverage will be and the activities and everything for what will be covered and so forth.
Okay. Super, thank you.
Yeah. You bet.
We'll see you tonight.
Yes, I'm done, yeah, yeah, and I did in tell Dave about it too. In case there were more questions, so, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
See you.
Sounds good, thank you, Ronnie.
You made me wait through all that.
I did.
Sorry.
Um, Peter Brewer, good morning.
Morning, uh can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good.
Um.
Let's see.
So we have a timed item here at nine thirty with you, um on uh. Air quality subject.
Yeah, yeah, I'm Peter Brewer, uh with the air quality uh. Oh, attainment area coordinator and wildfire coordinator for uh. All of Oregon, in some cases, and for central eastern Oregon and others. And I'm here to present on Lakeview. Or or uh air quality advancement program. Uh, I'm trying to share my screen here, I could do that. Or if you guys have enough on yours, uh you have the document that I provided earlier. Okay, there we go, okay. Let's see. I don't know if it really helps for me to share a screen.
Um, it it might, I have some of the documentation in front of me, but uh. So everyone can see it.
Uh, I don't know if you could.
Yep.
If you could see this up on the screen, okay. Yeah, I just go through this, it's it's almost the same, I made a few uh changes. Uh, in what you have in hand handed out, made a few small changes, if the things, a couple of things like dates and stuff, but uh. Anyway, uh going over our our quality uh program for Lakeview, very very important, but kind of a. A smaller issue in the scheme of things that I hear of the different issues you guys face. I always think it's fairly challenging, uh your role and what you all do, so appreciate appreciate your role. Um, in working on all the issues in Lake County, anyway, um cleaner or. We go through uh here a little bit, and you look through the table of content, figures, all that. Essentially, uh we've been in this program since about twenty fourteen. Uh, as at that time, uh we weren't uh in the clean air advance program uh earlier. You know, because we weren't doing the monitoring on time, um we didn't think we had quite an air quality issue, and then that's what we did monitoring. Uh EP had already drawn drawn that line for what's included for attainment or non attainment with the air quality standards. So in that way, we're lucky, we got out of the non attainment. Um, so we've been having all these years to catch up, and we've successfully done that. Last couple of years, it's looks pretty good, but of course we need to keep that out going. Uh, let's see, yeah, they find particular a matter of uh of concern is the Lakeview area in um. You know, it's Lakeview, the town itself, but also the the urban growth boundary, uh which includes part of the county around that area. Um, that's our focus area at the moment, um and we'll we'll continue to be. Though we're we're doing, as I said, pretty good with that right now, but in the past, we haven't done as well, um and we keep looking on that. Uh, let's see. Uh, things to focus on, sorry, my little little disjointed here, it's sometimes a little hard to jump in when you don't really see people very very much. Uh, as we presented from being from traveling for some time, so apologize for that, wish I could be there. And be in front of you, it'd be much uh easier to present in that way. Well, what we're what we're really looking at overall is to continue with our program uh into the future. We're doing great right now, as we'll see during a little bit. Um, but we wanna continue working with wood stoves, we've done some little change outs recently. Some of the non wood burning uh devices, which is great, but overall, we don't really care if people have wood burning devices, it's just when do they use them? Do they use them on really cold stagnant uh air uh days? Uh, we try not to, we try to get away from, not actually have people use other forms of heat. Uh, when the air is just not really moving and pollutants are building up, so it's kind of a key thing to look at. Of course, we keep in mind the horrible wildfire smoke we've had, um as horrible as last year. Not quite as bad in twenty twenty, but still it wasn't good. Um, and in previous years like twenty eighteen, it was very uh for uh for us. And it's more of an issue uh in some way, in many ways, uh for air quality, for everybody. Uh, for a longer period of time than what we're seeing in the wintertime. Right now, our focus is on winter, uh but always keep in mind, uh for me, the air quality is year round. Uh, it's not just the wintertime as we mostly focus with this program, but we're slowly uh looking more and more. At air quality year round and and how to help people, uh it's pretty tough, tough this last year. Although in this report, uh I'm looking at more so the year twenty twenty. And not really until like summer twenty twenty one, so we, you know, we gotta keep that in mind as well. Let's see, okay, look, tip into uh. A a little bit easier to to get the dialogue going, like, can you hear me okay? I forgot to ask who you are.
Yeah, no, we can still hear you.
Okay, good. Appreciate that, uh you zoom a lot, um use microcosmic accounts a lot. Uh, for different things, but sometimes it's a little different jumping into another program uh for someone else. Uh, anyway, we've got a couple of diagrams to go over, um get kind of our 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 thought processes going maybe a little bit more, and maybe some of that conversation. Love to hear from you guys on uh things you can think we we can do to improve the situation. Uh, things that I may not be articulated very well. And I'll try to jump in and do that, but it's always always good to get uh input uh from the uh county commissioners. So in this is looking at uh year by year data. It's a a nice picture, uh the little di- the little uh diamonds up here uh show where we were with wildfire smoke. Without wildfire smoke, we're down here in the blue, this is what we really focused on, the standard is thirty five micrograms per cubic meter. And we've been doing great the last three years, it's super, we're at about a twenty six microgram average, the standard's at thirty five uh point five micrograms. We're doing super well, uh I love to see this, we've had a little bit milder winters uh last few years, or we've had a little bit more wind. Also, uh you never know what we get, do we repeat like twenty seventeen where we had more stagnation? More cold in stagnant periods, or maybe back like in about twenty thirteen, I think we had as well, could you pop up, could you? Get to know reality, uh it challenges a lot more so. But here's where our kind of the current picture is. Uh, we'll shift down a little more of the standard here, whole whole public standard on the twenty four hour basis or the daily basis. Uh, is really looking at a three year uh value, it's kind of an average over three years. That's uh not a hundred percent of all the data that at the ninety eight percentile of the available data you have. So hard to quite conceptualize that, but it's taking about the top levels of data from three years, averaging it and seeing what to come up with. Uh, and you need that air quality standard. And uh, so we're doing uh pretty well, but if you look over over the years, uh we're doing better in the last three years. Uh, than we have uh since we really started this program about twenty fourteen. Where the three year average is kind of highly, and we're going higher back to here. And we have low years and then high years and kind of balance about. In some ways, though, we've been right around the standard for a number of years, and finally, last three years, we're able to get much further below. Uh, that there are some credits they give uh give there, but overall, uh the the town and the county are working pretty good. Uh, we've had some better weather last few years, uh more challenging situations in wildfire, I would say. Uh, but we've also have to reach more people with solutions, changing on wood stoves, getting other forms of heat in place, things like that, which really help. Okay, so we're doing great at the moment, uh we'll look into also the training of of how we've been uh over the years. Uh, we didn't quite have the uh PM two point five is a really small particulate matter. Two point five value, we didn't quite have that monitored, some of these years, so these are estimated based on. In uh particular mo- uh values at ten micrograms inside, so bigger size. They don't impact us as much, uh PM two point five really goes into your lungs. And uh can actually, this very small stuff can go straight through your lungs, getting the brain. Uh, things like that that aren't 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 good at all, oh, uh but we weren't monitoring for PM two point five for some of these years, so these are estimates. Uh, you know, always gotta keep that uh in mind, you know, based off the original data that we have. But uh you see a couple of things here, the red is the daily or twenty four hour uh average. You see these high years we've had, overall, yeah, it's done okay, but uh. Before the standard was up high, then shifted down a lot lower, uh be more reflective of of health. But we've had to make that little extra push, that in these tough years, as we've seen. Uh, we can uh exceed the standard by a fair amount, it impacts us for the three year period, we've done really well in the last few years. I'd also like to point out the annual uh average, we've done pretty well overall. Um, it was reduced down to twelve micrograms right here, uh for a while, we've done uh well there, if you back out wildfire, you can go blue dots down here. And uh in the future, EPA is right now, what I give you guys idea that they are looking at the standard. Uh, their advisory committee, uh host of all these air quality and health experts. Uh, looking at values uh on a twenty four hour basis and an annual average uh basis to see if they need to change. Uh, do they need to get smaller? Is that healthier, is that better for us? Uh, is it healthy, is it reason, or is it a a good thing? Or is it, you know, too good, pushing pushing the, well, yeah, no smoke is, or no particulate matter, not just smoke, you know, particulate matter is great, but. What is healthy, what is not, they're they're looking at that, I I heard a little bit of word from them that the ten microgram level is. Possibly, that's something that they're they're being evaluated, this is from EPA folks, they aren't part of that advisory committee. I don't have ties into that, but it's just possible that the annual average might change a little bit. Uh, maybe not the daily, I don't know, I keep expecting though that we will eventually get down to thirty micrograms. Uh, for a value. So I keep trying to get us and all the other communities in my purview, uh in central and eastern Oregon. That could be at that level, the thirty micrograms or lower than what I would, so next time they change the standard, we're we're good, we're good to go. Very important that we don't get a non attainment situation. Anyway, uh you see that we're we're doing pretty well without wildfire smoke on the annual average. Um, other than the twenty seventeen year, we're doing great on the on the daily value, uh we hope to continue in that way. Talk you a little bit fast, I don't know if uh anybody's got questions or anything to ask.
Is there, is there much da- data available for twenty twenty one yet?
Uh, yes, we we do have all our our data, um, yes. I'll just say that, uh kind of maybe do what might the question be, but uh. Uh, yes, we do.
Okay, I'm just seeing a lot of the data stopping at twenty twenty, and I didn't know when the, when this year's data would be out and available.
Uh, it's some of it out, well, it's kind of, I guess, out out now you might say, but some of that, not not all of it, but uh.
Yeah.
I have to say some of that more, being in the chair of looking at this data every day. You know, so it's it's, I see it all the time, but I forget what it'd be like for somebody to. Where are we, you know, how's it going?
Yeah.
For the twenty twenty one, yeah, we had a a rough summer. You know, a bunch of the state did, but uh especially uh southern Oregon, uh south central Oregon.
Right.
Had a hard time. Uh, we did fine last winter, uh the early part of twenty twenty one winter, uh we did really well there. As as far as the the data or the data I've seen. And now, you know, looking for, you know, how well do we do from uh about now, on November first, but through the end of the year? Uh, can we keep things pretty clean, uh then we get that another year, you know, four years in a row of of good uh values?
Okay.
For if we if we take wildfire out of this situation. Yeah, it's it's been rough, uh wildfire wise, I'm sure Commissioner Scholemberger can testify that, you know, wildfire's been. Really rough to the area and to um much of the state uh in the last five years. And uh, you know, as we're we're also in this drought period, it's it's been very, very tough. Um, we could go with all sorts of discussion on that, but we'll hold off for now. But I did just a little bit of uh look back at twenty seventeen, that last uh tough year we had, we weren't as good as getting out and knocking on doors right away. You know, first day you see people burning more than they should, or. On a day where you're you're getting closer to standard and putting out a lot of smoke. We're getting much better for the town, I I don't include myself in that really, but I always use that term lead. Cause I'm always behind the scene, uh really uh pushing or hearing, talking to people. But uh back in twenty seventeen, we didn't do uh quite as well with that early on, and then uh in the year. Uh, I wasn't around at that time as well, there was really nobody in my position at that time. And uh uh Dom uh before he was newer to the program. But we had a little bit harder time in that that fall into the the winter for uh twenty seventeen as well. You know, we're knocking on doors, but there's a lot of people burning and putting out a lot of smoke, and we do a better job now. Um, I but I still do not really wanna face this kind of a winter if we can. At least not for a little bit, I think we'd do much better though, if we we could, we get out there. And knock on doors and talk to people very quickly, and I think the words have been getting them out much nicer over time. Uh, to the general population as well as changing out wood stove, changing uh heating options for people. Little bit of mission update, uh this doesn't. Quite, it it's hard for me to even get my head around it, uh it's looking at what's our mission inventory for the area, kind of categorizing it. Number of of uh. categories. Uh, what it's really telling us is that overall, our big picture emissions for winter time are from residential wood combustion, from our permitted, uh, sources. Uh, some, some like area sources from non-permitted or, uh, uh, other commercial operations. Uh, I don't hold, hold the hat to, uh, these values that close to like residential from burning. I don't think we quite do that much. Uh, I think, uh, people do pretty well of not burning. Uh, some of these values are taken from a lake or like a Lake County, uh, value, uh, and are, they're older, older data. Uh, and sometimes they can't hold in, uh, exactly what's going on for like residential burning. Now, I, I reflect that we do have ordinance in place for, for urban growth boundaries, uh, but just a little harder fact. Like, they give us a better, a little bit of idea. Residential combustion for it, that's, uh, emissions coming out of stacks. And it doesn't really go without any wind. And if it's a colder day, the smoke kind of comes up and hangs out in the area. The permitted sources, usually it's a lot hotter emission, not all of it, but a bunch of it from combustion. Um, hotter will go up higher in the atmosphere before kind of leveling out. Uh, it doesn't hit the, uh, older urban growth boundary as much. It can at times. You know, this is just general weather, uh, picture I'm, I'm giving you. Um, but usually that will go up and distributed across a little different area and not be very in town, uh, if we see with, uh, with combustion and other forms of, of fine particulate matter, PM 2.5, uh, a little bit from roadways, a little bit from here, a little bit from there. Uh, but the wood, the wood combustion really does add up and give us, us the health problem no the time. Okay, uh, we move on from there. Uh, our, our real focus is in these areas. Of course, permitted sources, uh, work under the permits. Uh, through DQ as well, uh, that's a whole different kind of, uh, consideration. Uh, in this case, pick, pick 12 kind of viewpoint of what I was just talking about. Uh, yeah, the little harder one to really understand is the other area sources, uh, open up few of dust or not. Yeah, some of these other non-road, uh, open burning, not quite sure if that's reality, but those are still smaller overall in this picture. Um, on to our strategies. Just to give you a little bit of an idea, uh, nice thing is I think you all know pretty well, uh, what we've been doing. Um, Commissioner Williams, uh, maybe has had a little bit less introduction, but still jumped in very, very much into, uh, this, these topics. Uh, so really appreciate that, but unfortunately, all of you do have an idea, uh, if, if not from, uh, Commissioner Scholmberger, uh, more lately diving in and really taking an active role of you, uh, the chair of our program. Uh, and so, so all of you have an idea of what we've been doing. I won't try to cover everything. Um, but just give you, give you that overall, where, what do we do and where are we going, where do we think we're going, and what are you trying to do. Uh, anyway, from, uh, last year, we got a pretty good program. Uh, we knocked on doors a bit more. Uh, weather was very much in our favor, so we didn't have to do a whole lot. We have a newer person doing the air quality work with the town, um, with Paulie. Um, but, uh, working very much, uh, in, in concert, uh, you know, with, with seasoned people in town. So that really helped. So you can see we had 119, uh, green, green days, one yellow day, zero red days. So fabulous season in that way. Um, hard to really pin our hats on our, our program, uh, because the, the weather kind of took care of it. So you're, you're on top of it every day, you know, wondering every day, every few days, as you're looking at that weather, is it going to change? Is it going to change? What do we, what do we have to do? Um, let's see, what's so changed out, uh, program weatherization. Uh, nice thing, we did have a grant, uh, last year for $75,000 to do that type of work. Um, we changed out, ended up being, uh, 11 wood stoves, uh, five were wood stove, or wood stove change outs, six were to, uh, uh, new heat pump, uh, category. Uh, so it was pretty nice. And we also built, uh, I think it's, it's a 14, um, one cord wood storage units to put into homes as we're trying to, uh, you know, not ignore that people are burning wood. It's very important that can they burn the driest, most, you know, best seasoned wood if they can. Uh, it, the wood storage units are really only one unit of storage each. Um, and I think there's some codes, building codes that you couldn't have more than, uh, so many square feet installed before I had to inspect, you know, a permit and all that. So these each meet that or two, two of these units can meet that. Um, so we're, uh, installing those where we could. I think Barry might have more to say about that than, than I do at the moment, uh, not being able to be involved. Uh, but, uh, those are successful and hopefully will help out this year. Uh, and some of the wood stoves, I have to, uh, tell you that if I see the pictures, the wood stove being changed out, uh, for like another wood stove. And if it really does break your heart, uh, you see wood stoves with holes in them. Um, wood stove is in very poor condition that has been just going for years, uh, to year, 40 years, uh, and, and being used by people who really do not have funding to do much of anything at all. And, uh, it, it does break your heart. Uh, you really want to help out where you can. So I was glad we could. I'd like to come back, uh, someday when we can with more, uh, heat insulation, um, change outs, like $5,000 to change out more windows, um, put in more insulation in places, uh, do more for people. I need to look a little more carefully at other state commissions, what, what we can do. Uh, yeah, I'd like to get on, on that, that scene a little bit more, realizing we have a lot of people in this community who could use help, uh, with their heating issues and they don't have a lot of money. Um, so it's very important to help keep them warm, uh, but also have an insulated home. Uh, so you don't have to heat up the house as much to stay warm. And as I get older, I feel the cold more. So I do understand that, that things change as you get older. You kind of know that, but as you get older, you know it even more. Uh, anyway, uh, our program was pretty successful before. We don't have that kind of funding at the moment. Uh, maybe we will if you're in the near future. Um, we do have a open burning prohibition to do, uh, burning within, uh, the, the local area. It's always nicer to do it either like right now, uh, on a, on a little day with some breeze or say in March. Usually we have more breeze in the March or April. Uh, the dead of winter is really the time to burn. Uh, we've done, uh, or in, our plan also to do, uh, public education awareness. We've done a lot of this in the past. Uh, let's see what I really want to highlight. Oh, we, we try to really, how do we reach people? And anything, any ideas you guys have, that would be great to hear. But through, you know, a little bit of local radio, there's some, some stations, uh, through the website, through the stoplight, through the flags, uh, through the reader board. There's a hot, a 24 hour hotline. There's some people who may not leave their homes in the morning, want to know is it an okay day to burn? What, what do they do? They can't see a flag. They can't see anything out the window. Um, where do they go? And sometimes, uh, they aren't internet savvy or maybe don't have internet, um, not available to them. Just calling the 24 hour line is available or calling the town, uh, that, that works too. Uh, but we try to accommodate everybody we can. Uh, email people, add somebody on Facebook. Uh, it's always hard to say is, if you see us to look, look up and find, is it always installed, uh, every day with what the burn option is for that day. Hard for me to always say, uh, but those are areas we try. Uh, we'd like to do more public education in the schools or in service groups. Uh, that's a little bit, it's been more on hold. Uh, we'd still like to do more with our education in our schools. So we'll, we'll work on, we'll continue to work on that. Uh, education and proper burning, storage of wood and especially wood, not to use a wood stove. Let's see. Uh, and we do, uh, partner very well with the Forest Service. Uh, we have in the past with the Collins Pine on open burning, prescribed burning, uh, to essentially not do it in the winter time when there's any air quality issues in town or when, uh, that burn could, could be impactful, uh, to the town. Uh, that's kind of smart to just do in, in general, uh, but, uh, as we have more, we want to do out in the woods. Unfortunately, a bunch of our woods just burned up, I hate to say. Um, but there's still work to do out there. There's still things to, to work on and areas to do under burning and do a way better controlled burn than this wildfire, uh, unfortunate wildfires with the, the community, uh, in a very bad way, uh, in the last few years, especially this last year. That's horrible. Uh, future efforts, let's see, I'll focus a little bit on highlight areas. Uh, besides continued efforts to do education outreach regarding wood stoves, uh, reduce our wood smoke. Uh, we're, we'll do as much as we can with that. Uh, but we also would like to, uh, get in a couple of other monitors. There's, uh, cheaper, smaller monitors. They aren't as accurate. The DQ one is accurate and it's, uh, okay by EPA as the official monitor. Uh, I would love to see at least like two other monitors in the area. It costs about 300 bucks a piece, a little bit under that, but what's called a purple air monitor. Um, I would love to see a couple more, one down by the hospital and one maybe up north more or, or rather by, uh, by either industry or just out of town a little bit or right on the edge. Um, that's more up to, up to you folks to give advice on that, but I would love to see it. Maybe we can use some of the, uh, $15,000 annual investment, um, that DQ has been able to provide through our legislature, uh, to Lakeview. Maybe we can use about $300 of that, at least get one monitor, uh, say down by the, the hospital. That'd be, that'd be very good. Um, open ideas there. Uh, let's see. Also, we're looking to join, I'm not sure if it's still called the Alert Sense Program. Uh, maybe Barry has more to say, uh, on this, but the, the program that would give advice on, on say, uh, burning, whether it's prescribed burning, uh, wildfires, uh, but also winter time would and other emergencies, uh, in the areas, maybe for schools. Uh, not quite sure where we are with that. We were really looking into the last year. Uh, it's a little bit more challenging, um, to, to follow. Uh, but we're, we're kind of like a last, last agency or, or partner to jump into that, um, aspect of the program. Uh, but maybe, maybe we can get a little bit more up in on that. But we also like to burn, uh, build more towards, uh, wood cordwood storage units, change out more stoves. Um, I'd love to see a, a block grant come in for the, uh, town. We had one or two years ago, uh, five years ago or so, for about $300,000 to do, do some change outs. I have to look into that more or talk to other people to tie into more of the multi-agency teams to understand what's available. Not sure that they're quite available, uh, at this time, but it'd be great to get that. Any way we can get more money to change out wood stones would be perfect. Um, oh, what else? My brain's a little, little numb on, on anything else there. Uh, but, uh, yeah, we're a little summary here. And then also, uh, from the town of Lakeview, a very annual report, which is kind of nice to, it's a very quick read. I don't know if any of you had the chance to look through it, uh, other than Barry. Um, but it's, it's, uh, it's nice to see what's going on in that kind of commitment from the town, uh, to do this work. Um, overall, I think we do have a pretty good program going. Uh, it's been a little harder, uh, with COVID, uh, to get together. Uh, I hate to say it's, it's been, you know, harder to have meetings, harder to get people to come to meetings. Uh, recently we had our, our, uh, town counselors, a, a couple, I guess, are out on COVID themselves. Um, it just, different challenges like that have been really hard to, to connect more, more solidly as a program here in the last year, year and a half. But we'll get back on track. But, uh, I'm, I'm pretty solid about that. It's just going to take a little bit more time. Uh, as I tell my agency, I'll go down with a, a mask on. It's okay. Uh, or, or a N95 type of a mask. Uh, that's all right. But hopefully pretty simple. I can come down and visit. It's always more important to work with people instead, just through the computer page. Uh, but I appreciate seeing people as I can. Uh, but in, in general, the town and that part of the county, they've done, uh, uh, pretty, pretty well. We had some great air quality. So that's, that's been helpful, but we keep, we keep making strides in, uh, wood stove change outs and education, uh, chatting with people, putting in the, uh, wood storage. Uh, shelter this last year has been a help. I'd like to see more go in, um, little fancier ones if we could, if we're afforded. Uh, but overall, we're, we're working pretty well, uh, moving forward in a way. Hopefully we can stay, uh, on that three year basis, you know, every single year, uh, below our current air quality, uh, daily standard and above, below an annual standard. Uh, so I took a little bit of time there, but, uh, any questions? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I, I got a couple, Peter. Um, thank you for all the work you're doing. Um, there's a few concerns I have, and I probably stated this to you before, is when you start changing out the wood and making mandatory rules on wood stoves, my concern is, is that, um, like last year that happened up in Sandy and several different places in Oregon where an ice storm came through and people lost electricity, some of them up, some communities up to six weeks. The people that didn't have wood stoves couldn't heat their homes. And, uh, whether it's a propane stove or an oil stove or a heat pump, all of them require electricity to run. A wood stove doesn't. And so my fear is, is that something will happen here where we lose electricity for extended periods of time and people's houses freeze up on them. Then you have plumbing issues. Then you have, um, people are dying because they can't heat their homes. They're cold. Uh, and so that's my concern with this. Uh, wood stoves are getting more and more tech, uh, tech savvy with the, um, stoves emitting less and less emissions. Uh, and so I don't really want to focus on getting rid of wood stoves. Um, I would like to, uh, make it so we have second sources of heat, whether that's your wood stove or your other stove, uh, heating device. Whether that's your wood stove or your other stove, heating device. Because it would be nice that if something happens where we can't use our heat pump or oil or propane, that we have something to keep our houses warm.
All right.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I was gonna say, that's been a, a big focus of ours is you don't, you don't have to take out that wood stove. It's nice if it has holes in it to be able to change it into something that doesn't, that, that works really well. But we also want to get other, other form of heat in the house. But you don't necessarily take away the wood stove. If the people don't want it, don't want it gone. Some people do for space or whatever, others don't. And so we don't promote, we have to take out every stove. Maybe they do in some counties, but here we aren't doing that. And in some counties, I should say, not necessarily in central eastern Oregon where we actually need heat like this, like you're, you're saying also. But I, I think it's, it's good to have a good wood stove in place if it's needed and also have other forms of heat. And also, if we have a, I think if we have a weather storm like that and problems with heating, with people freezing now, with homes frozen. I think that view from EPA has, as they just say in that term, an act of God. Or an, an act of, something else that's beyond what, anything we can do. And that's not counted against them. That's, I don't know, I haven't faced that, as other states have. But I believe that's the case, kind of like wildfire also ultimately isn't counted against us. But the smoke from wildfire will exceed the standard, it's like, okay, that doesn't count against you. That's, that's caused by other natural, you know, other agents in the place. So I'm hoping that Commissioner Alberton, that that can help alleviate that. Although I hate to think if we ever face that, that people are without heat for, for days and days. And their home freezes up, their beach freezes up, that'd be horrible.
Another thing, I'm, I'm not in support of any new monitors. One's good for me. And I've told you that before. I am supportive of the cordwood storage sheds. If I remember right, that's a hundred and twenty square feet that you could build without a permit. But I'm definitely into people burning the driest wood they can, most seasoned wood they can, to help us out there. And so that's all I have, Peter.
Yeah, that was, it was nice to have a grant that allowed that, that kind of work going in. That kind of a product, that was pretty nice. So we're pushing for more things like that. To help push people to use the cleanest wood that they can in the driest, the cleanest is one term. The driest wood or seasoned wood that they can or when they need to, is very, very important. And then also have some other forms of heat that they can use when they need to for poor air quality days. That is the goal, that's, that's my push.
So Peter, Barry Scholmberger here. In your chart, you showed that we've got three good winters in a row now. And you were hoping that we have a fourth. What, what would a fourth good winter mean to us? Can you explain that?
We may have cold days, but we've got a little bit of a breeze. You know, even five miles an hour, four miles an hour, something, just moving through the area. It's always more calm at night, but can we, or tends to be, but can we move smoke away enough during the daytime, during the evenings? To keep that overall concentration down. And that's kind of looked at that way. Maybe it's cold, but we've got a little bit more air movement than, than those stagnant periods where air doesn't move for almost two weeks straight. Or a week straight here and a week straight there, that adds up over time. We do see those, they, they will come back. We may have more, as I say, a little bit more California weather. Maybe it's a Northern California weather. I live outside of Sisters, this area as well. It's like, uh, it's just not as cold. It hasn't been as freezing or as cold for as long as we see normally. But they will come back. So it's more air movement that we can see. And then eventually, when we have those stagnant periods, are people ready enough? And it'll take knocking on doors, I'm sure, to say, could you use your, your non-wood stove heat source for this cold period? It can be a rough ask for people. I would like to see what a state agency, maybe like, maybe, maybe it's not DEQ, maybe it's Housing Community Services. I don't think that's their current name. But somebody else to have some funding to help pay for heat for those who can't really afford other than putting wood in a stove. And maybe they're old too and are having a harder time doing that. I'd love to, love to see some, a bit more help with those kind of like heat sources for the times when we need it.
Yeah, I understand all that. I, I guess what I was trying to get at was if we have four good seasons in a row, good winters in a row with our PM two point five advanced plan, what does that mean for Lakeview?
If, that, it means, it means great and that we're, we're doing really well. Ultimately, it could mean that maybe we don't continue the program. We continue wood stove advisories. But maybe we don't have to continue the PM advanced program. We continue some elements, but maybe not others. EPA seems very interested in, in keeping moving in this direction. As some people see that this is better than, than other options, that if an area goes non-payment than they've got right now, it's almost like a twenty-year date with EPA, which is just horrible. It's kind of a backwards way of regulating. But you know, hopefully, hopefully we could, we could keep working with EPA. Maybe we make things a little simpler, we could do that. Or our, our annual report is more, is longer than, than others are. Covers a lot more, but I think it does get for us to really spell out what we're doing. But overall, Commissioner Scholmberger, I'm not, I'm not quite sure what that picture might look like. Maybe we do pull out of this program, but I, I think we continue forward with air quality program one way or another. And I'd be a hundred percent in, keep going forward in that direction from, from my point of view, from the DEQ standpoint, being a partner with the community.
You know, I'm a, I'm a bit of an optimist. I do see that the good work that's been done with some of the wood stove change outs. We know that some of those stoves were in pretty rough shape. And now we've got better ones. I do think folks are paying more attention to the red, yellow, green days. We do have the agencies on board with burning during red days in the winter time and advised on yellow days. You know, I think we're heading in a good direction. And we do have here in Lake County, lots of days, it seems like of you said it, an act of God type weather where we can't control. And we can't control summertime wildfire smoke. We certainly can't control, you know, a big, big freeze out or really low temperatures, which can very well happen in Lake County. We've seen it happen, so. But I feel like we're, we're moving in a good direction. And if we can have four good winters in a row, you know, I think it would be a nice compliment to the community if we could move on to a simpler air quality program versus the advanced program.
I, I second that, I think that'd be great if we do and we can. I try to think of, of more in that picture, how do we help out better in the summertime when we have smoke from wildfires, for example? What can we do more, open ideas there? Maybe offline, maybe it's another, another topic, another time that you and I could talk about. But we've done pretty well with our winters and hopefully we can continue that trend. Really appreciate the thoughts.
Well, I think EPA and DEQ both need to support forest health projects. So we can reduce the fuel loads and publicly state that so we don't have what we've been having, so.
I'm all for that. And I, I do put in my, my, my leverage where I can, if I have, if can have some. But I do, part of my role is on the, the working with state forestry and with all their prescribed fire activities. It's a secondary role of mine, I'm not in the lead. But I, I do partner with our lead person. And you know, we're, we're looking at, how can we allow, how can we get to more and more control cleanup? And a lot of it is funding, maybe Barry can talk a little bit more about that. But funding, you know, from the federal side, trickling down to the agency to be able to do those controlled projects, controlled burning. And then the other time, the other things is thinking just about weather. I think we've got the weather pretty well, covered pretty good. It's just what can we do more on that funding side, getting more days of, of good weather? That's the hard part, it's, it's really hard in central Oregon for if I've been to have the right days. Right, especially right around the community to do the burning, the under burning when they want to do it. Maybe it's the first time we've burned in an area, you know, burned in for eight years or something. I'm not sure, I don't know that population around Lakeview as much as I do around central Oregon.
Well, what's hard for me, Peter, is, you know, like the town of Paisley, their street lights were coming on at three or four in the afternoon because the intense smoke that they were having. And that was firstly all summer for them. And then for the agencies, EPA or DEQ to squawk about somebody burning the wood stove in the winter time. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me because our wood stoves aren't making the street lights turn on at three o'clock in the afternoon. And so we have to, we have to start focusing on the summertime activities and get this taken care of. Because that's where the health problems are happening. It's in the summer, not in the winter now. And so I think we need to start focusing on how to control that, that problem, and so.
Yeah, I'm with you there on the, the winter, the winter time, I still, I still think our health standard is, is what it is. And that's not changing, summer, winter, you just look at it. But it's been much more bad from the summer. This has just been horrible. Yes, Paisley and all around Summer Lake was hit so hard this last year. Yeah, I, I, I do, I do hear your comments very well. We'll keep pushing in that direction.
And Peter.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I think you do know, two different programs we did last year focused on HEPA filters and replacement filters for those HEPA filters. And I believe we bought over two hundred and fifty of them between the two programs, or right around that number. And that worked out pretty good, I think people were pretty happy. We see a need to potentially get some more of them in the future. I think some people are buying them on their own. But one thing, getting back to Commissioner Alberton's point, you know, we've heard some slight discussions. And I don't know if you can confirm or deny it, but you know, EPA was talking about helping somehow get the fuel loads off of the forests, you know, reducing fuels. And one of those ways that EPA can help out with that is if, you know, if that, that fuel load could go to biomass plants and they could get credits off of federal lands to do that. So that would, that would be a potential possibility. You know, we have a local, you know, with Red Rock here, south end of town. And there's currently no avenue right now for them to take fuel off federal land without the credit that they need to do that, so.
Yeah, that, that doesn't make any sense to me. We'll try to get through that here pretty soon. I'm sure they're working on it much harder than I can imagine. But yeah, and even hauling wood to a local, local or maybe it's kind of far away, but with credits to a facility that can, can burn the wood for energy, for example, or even using the, the burn boxes. Essentially, it's a smaller unit, about the size of a, a container with fans and with an air curtain. And we're, we're seeing more of those come online here. It'd be, that'd be excellent. Even if it produces, it doesn't produce anything, you can actually burn the wood much more cleanly right there at the location, especially near, near the town, near the community. That's pretty important, but I, I'm hoping we see ten, fifteen, twenty of those from maybe the state here in the next two years. We'll see. Usually hauling the wood has been expensive. And it's just really hard to find someone to pay for it. I think the friends are opening up a bit more, that, that's happening for the federal forests, that they need to spend more money. You, you have much more of an idea than I do on that. Yes, hopefully we'll see more in those directions here in the near future. But I'd love to send it right to your local facility, absolutely, makes the most sense.
Thank you, Peter.
Okay, if there's, if there's nothing else, I really do appreciate. Stop sharing, there we go. I really do appreciate having a chance to talk about, about this in our annual presentation. Seems like it's been more longer than a year since the last time, but I really do appreciate that. And thank you for your time and look forward to input at any time, especially. Thank Commissioner Scholmberger, thank you for your, your volunteering and being on our committee, very important.
We probably need to plan a meeting.
Yes, we do.
Let's shoot early November.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks, Peter. All right, anything else? Good discussion. We have one other item on our list, Judy.
Hi guys.
Good morning, how are you?
Good morning, good morning.
So firemail help fees.
Yes, it was brought to my attention by Caroline, who does our billing that. We are missing some fees for the mobile, oh, I'm so sorry. The mobile units. And so she did some investigating and at the, I, I think you guys got the paperwork that you could look at. It looks like we have two that we're looking at. One is childcare and summer mail site inspections. And the other one is the warehouse and license. And she put the fees on there that she recommended. So I was just coming to check in and see what you guys thought about that.
Okay. Thoughts?
Thoughts?
Well. Don't take this personally.
No, I know we don't like to charge anybody.
Cause you know, I think you're a rock star and you do an amazing job, but than anybody else can do. I just, so this is. This is really hard for me because. The, the governor's office, OSHA and OHA have used our licenses. As targets for people, I believe this, this last year with sending OSHA into our communities.
Sorry.
What happened?
He was the host of the event for all.
Oh, was there anyone else on?
No, but it's fine, sorry.
Any, anyways, so I'm having a trouble and so please hear me, I'm not.
No, sure.
This isn't a personal thing whatsoever, but. They used it as a target for, to come into our communities, everybody that had a license. They keyed on and I think went way overboard on. I've, I feel our community was terrorized and so to have somebody else have to have a license. Cooperate, it's just to me is putting a target on them by the state and I don't want to do it. I, I get where you're at. I totally do, but.
So I'm not sure exactly how this works. This is not my program. Caroline and Brenda run it. So they have to be inspected in order to stay open. It, it becomes complicated because it's now a lake district program. But it's put on the county's website, so I, I'm not sure how to move forward. I just know we have a couple places that we've inspected that we cannot give them their license until we do the transaction. And that's where this stemmed from.
So. What's the current fee?
There isn't. It's missing. So this, we didn't have, um, you know, like the, the, what are they called? The food carts. So we didn't have those, so we hadn't licensed those before. And when Caroline came on to look, um, she went to do some licensing and that's how this was brought to our attention. Um, same thing for the summer program apparently. And so she just brought it to my attention saying, I can't, I can't do anything until we have a license fee that's attached to it. And then I can move forward and ask me to bring it to you guys. And, and I apologize, out of almost all of the programs, this is the one I know the least amount on.
Could you just update me on who Caroline is?
Caroline is, so we contract with somebody to come to Lake County to do our inspections for environmental health. She is the specialist that we've hired. That has been for a very long time, I think years ago before I was here, there was a gentleman in Altus. Um, that would come do it and I think it was his father before that, that was before me. But we don't have anybody in Lake County that qualifies for that, so she comes from Grant's Pass. And so she'll come and stay a long weekend and do our um inspections for us. And so she's the one that uh bills and Brenda helps her, you know, Brenda, our receptionist helps her. And she's the one that brought these emails to my attention saying we need to, to move forward and get this taken care of.
Is she a state employee?
No, she's a private employee for us. Yeah, and she does inspections in other places. Um, but we were fortunate enough that she, I think, went down to part-time and is solely just working for us right now.
What does the fee go towards?
Uh, so we get billed for her inspection and what, what we try to do is when our fees cover her salary. Um, and I don't think they do. Um, the hospital has to pay for, for to stay in a motel, for food, for traveling and her stuff. And of course, we do not make enough money to cover that, but the fee covers the services for her to go and do the inspections. Is my understanding, Barry.
This helps me.
Yeah, and, and it might be helpful. I, I wish that I could have her come and talk because she knows ins and outs and I do not. But any questions we do have, I certainly have access to her by phone or uh by email and she's always. Very happy to answer any of the emails. She gets all the complaints with restaurants. Um, we send it to her, she does all the follow-up on that. She also does the motels, so when we have bedbugs and that sort of stuff, she goes and does the investigations and stuff there. Any other complaints with the motels also.
I'm just wondering if there is another way to, that we could handle some of the costs in-house.
So, sure, and then you go back and, and again, we need to maybe bring her in on this conversation then. Um, because all the other restaurants are already paying this. So why are we allowing just a couple not to have to pay this? That's not fair either.
I understand.
And I, I totally understand and I, I totally understand why you're doing it.
Yeah.
I hope you can see why.
I don't want to, I, I'm doing productive help. I don't want to charge anybody anything.
So what the county did last year, I remember, right? We paid all the business licenses.
Yeah, and we have plenty to do that. That's a wonderful thing.
And so. I think we took that economic development.
CROs.
Yeah. And so. That's how I want to do it, but my, my problem still stands. I mean. I just, I just don't want OSHA to have, be able to have people targeted and that's where I'm struggling. And so I have no problem paying their business licenses, just like we did everybody else's, but.
I just don't know how it works. If I, we can't, we have to be able to license them to stay open. Is my understanding, so it's not.
So have they applied for a business license?
Well, she's been there. Yeah, so she's already been to them saying, okay, I've done two of them now, but I have no way to. Finish it because we don't have anything to attach it to. Yes. Well, and we've had the Mexican one for how many years now? Uh, fair, sure. Maybe at least three have been. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure how any of that worked before Caroline. So I think, I, I mean, I really don't know because when I was reading this, I thought, well, I'm not sure how they were licensed before. Because it's a yearly thing.
So are they licensed at all?
I don't know the answer to that.
It's not fair that one restaurant has to pay and another one doesn't. I get that.
Yeah. Well, we want to make sure that they can stay open and if they have to do something to stay open. That's out of our hands, but yes, I agree. If we can assist in helping pay, that's a wonderful thing. Um, I just, you know, my budget, I can't help.
I'm sorry, I'm making it difficult.
It's not difficult. Uh, it's just something apparently that we have not. We should have taken care of this a while ago. It sounds so.
Is there any pushback from commissaries or warehouse folks?
I haven't, Caroline didn't say there was any. Uh, her, part of the issue of going out and doing licensing is they were, had. Did you guys, I don't know if I sent you this email, that there was, um, they were storing food inappropriately. And, and that I think maybe started some of this possibly is going on site and then doing some education and some teaching and. She never shuts places down. She works with them. She's lovely. Um, and um. And, and I don't think there was any sort of negative um with it because she was trying to help them figure out how to do it correctly and be able to stay open. I, I haven't got any complaints from anybody about it. And boy, do I get complaints. Yeah, and none have been on this so far. Yeah. And I think that the, the fee is something that is already, it was already out there. She just brought it and said, this is what they're charging. Um, that's not anything that we made up. We didn't come up with that fee.
So. I guess we need to decide, is this be appropriate? Do we not want it at all? Do we want to pay for part of it?
You know, I wish I. So, just to try to, for me to get it straight in my mind, so. Something brought this onto your guys' radar. Was it, did they apply for a business license and that? What?
Uh, no, I think probably what happened, and I apologize, I, I, I didn't know it was as complicated as this when I came over. I think what happened is Caroline came on to staff and is doing her job and went to do a licensing and then came upon. How do I charge? And it could be that last year we paid for things, maybe we didn't even bill them last year. Um, I don't know the answer to that. Except that she has, she says in her email that she's went, she completed two of them, but now she, she can't finish it.
If we were to approve a fee, how often would that come back for review or would that be ongoing until it needs to be changed again?
So I just got an email again from Caroline. Last week or the week before saying that the state is changing, adjusting their fees, so when they adjust their fees. Then we look at our fees to cover Caroline, is how it works, I believe. Um, and since I took over. What has it been, four years now, guys? I still say I knew, can't say that anymore. Since I took over, this is the first that I see of any of this. Uh, but it could be, it's the first time we have somebody to focus on doing this portion of the job. Yeah. And I'm totally comfortable. If you guys want to come up with some questions, we'll email them to, to Caroline and get some answers for you. I mean, I, I'm totally happy to do that. She's the expert in this area, not me. And I'm happy to start that conversation if it would be helpful to you and I'm sure I'll learn along the way with you.
I just, I want to keep the community safe, you know, I don't want.
Yeah, we can't have them not licensed. That's.
And not, and not storing food properly.
Yeah, yeah.
Make somebody very.
Yeah.
Um, but on the other hand, I have my issues with the state of Oregon and so.
I don't think it's anything new. Um, you know, it's the same program. It's just, we've not had the access to that type of restaurant.
Well, my thought is, is that. We go ahead and set the fees if that's what it needs to be. But we cover those licenses, accounting covers them and so.
So would you just cover it for that two groups or licenses?
Well, we've never paid for these ones. That's what I'm saying because it's never been listed. We paid everybody's last year.
Right.
And so I would say at this one time, we pay these guys. Because we don't want to have to be licensed. To have to follow the rules with food handling and that. But we also don't want to stifle our economic development with these businesses coming in and so my thought would be, we'd pay.
And I'm sure it's more than two because now we have, and so she, so we have at least three that I know of, right? Two at the, the laundromat and then the one here.
Well, then we have another Mexican one out of the.
So, so and it could be that she just stopped doing her licensing until we could figure this out, so we might have, you know, more. Yeah.
What do you think about that?
It sounds like you're getting into, we have to deal with it every time the licensing came up.
The thing is, is that we paid for all the licensing last year.
We did because of the issue of nobody, no income, you know.
And all the restaurants were actually closed.
Yes, yes.
And there was no income coming in, so.
So I, I don't know. I just want to be fair.
No, I understand.
I don't want the state use this as a target. That's my problem. So, but I also want to keep people safe.
Right.
Not to be a pain in your butt.
Oh, I never see you guys anymore. You're not pains to me. I wish. I wish I could just, I was just happy that it was taking an hour.
Anything else?
I sent it to her. Oh darn, I'm still waiting for my turn. No, no worries.
So whatever you guys want to do, I may not find it, but it's just.
What's your thoughts, Commissioner?
Well, I, I don't want to get into the area of special preference for one over the other. And being that we're not even, we don't even have a full tally necessarily yet.
Right.
Of all the different businesses that will be affected by this, I mean. Uh, you know, we're a county-wide entity, you know, this isn't just about, you know, the little businesses that are right here in Lakeview. You know, there's a food truck up in Silver Lake.
Yeah.
That just started up and so forth.
Yeah, she'll be going to all those.
So, you know, I just, I'm looking at it thinking, we don't really know enough yet to start um. Making. I understand where Commissioner Albertson's coming from. And we don't want to be unfair to some of these businesses, especially these little mom and pop places. If anything, we want to be able to incentivize some of those businesses to get going. We want to encourage entrepreneurship. But um, uh, at this point, we gotta, we have to proceed. And um, if we want to evaluate whether or not those fees are too high at some other point in the future. To try and give some of these businesses a break, we could do that. Uh, once we have a better idea of what we're actually looking at, we could relook at these fees, whether or not we could come up with some dollars to. Offset their costs. We could do that too, but at this point, we just need to move forward with what the fees actually are.
I did send the email that I got from her about the state recalculating. I sent that on to finance at the hospital since they're the ones paying Caroline.
Right.
Uh, so when I, when and if I hear anything about that, I'll be sure to share it with you guys. Um, I just did that, I think, last week that I, that I got it.
Well, you know, I mean, it does cost money for us too, to have Caroline, say, drive all the way up to the north end. And a stat and go through and walk through. I know you did a walk-through of one business up there in Christian Valley not too long ago.
Yeah, she, she just was up in North Lake, I think, last time she was here. I think she does a really good job.
Oh, absolutely.
And I, and I'm happy to help her. It, it would be really nice if we could. Have somebody who has interest and wants to do it in Lake County and train them. I mean, it takes quite a bit to be trained. It'd be really nice to have a local person be able to do that because I have. You know, it's getting, Caroline's going to be like every other one. It's going to get to a certain period of time and now that winter's coming. She stops for a while because of roads and then we build up and then she, she'll come and make it through. Um, but that's how it's been for a long time. I always think of good jobs for local people and that would be a really good one if somebody ever wanted to do it.
Right.
I think they get paid pretty well.
Yeah.
But yes, that, that is what I have on that.
And right now, the, respectively, they're, the fees are about a hundred and eighty and three hundred and fifty.
So it looks like the, the, yes, so the school program fee, so what does it say here? Um, to sum it up, um, the fees are a hundred and eighty and three hundred and fifty, yep.
And then childcare is seventy-five.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay. And those fees are good for a full year.
Correct, and they, and with that here, it's my understanding that she does two visits with them, I think, and it covers that.
Say, say that again.
I think she goes out and helps them and, and does two visits, I believe, during that one, one year, if she gets over here enough, yeah.
If the fees were lowered, do you feel like she would feel it may not be worth her time?
She won't care because we're going to pay her whatever.
Right.
Um, so I don't think she would care at all what the fees are. She's just doing her job. Where, I think where it attaches is, um, is covering the cost of her.
Right.
Yeah.
It's just offset the cost somewhere else and looking at full dollars from one place over here to offset our costs to pay her. But she's making same.
She's more than happy to come and do whatever. She, so when I get anything like this, I, I send it to her. Brenda does actually, because Brenda's working with her. And um, I would have brought Brenda, but she would absolutely think if she came over and had to chat, chat in front of you guys, so um.
We're not that.
Um, it's a hot seat here.
Yeah, there's a camera.
So, uh. So, uh, yeah, so I, um. Yeah, I, I, she, she, those two are the ones that are actively involved and I apologize that I don't know a lot about this. But like I said, I'm, I'm very happy to involve them in all the conversations so that they can answer questions that I can. Absolutely. Yeah, my defo went from one cent to nineteen dollars in a, in a day. You know, life is crazy. Anything else you guys need or want from me?
How are we doing?
So we have, we're, we're doing better. We have, I think, about twenty-five cases since Friday. We send, we tend to be averaging about five to twelve a day, depending on what day. We're, we're managing fine, as you, you know, if you follow any of this, we've dropped, I think they want us to be what at a ninety percent callback rate. We're down in the seventies now with being able to get, have the time to get ahold of everybody and and, and, and do it in a timely manner with other things. I think Carney was down to twelve percent. I mean, we're all struggling with trying to keep up with it all. But our priority is, right now is just getting people vaccinated who want to be vaccinated. And we're moving on to flu season and doing flu clinics. So we'll start flu clinics. I do have a state group coming and they were going to come today. It didn't work out. So I think they're coming on the twenty-sixth to the fairgrounds to do a drive-through testing for people because we've had a lot of people frustrated and want to be tested and we just don't get that done. So we'll have that once, maybe twice for them, depending on the weather. So people can get tested if they want to get tested and at least have it here instead of going to Klammer or somewhere where they have to go.
Will they have to have symptoms?
No, it's for anybody.
So it's antibodies too?
No, so that's a blood draw. This is a nasal swab, just to see if they're positive.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, so yeah, so they're, they're doing the whole thing. We don't have to assist with it at all this time. They're bringing the, the people. So what I'm hoping is I get a confirmation for sure on the date. So I can at least write it in the newspaper or, you know, put it on Facebook or something. Otherwise, it's at the fairgrounds and people are working and it's ten to four and who's going to see it? So I'm hoping today that they'll tell me the date so I can get that in the newspaper. I think we, um, I think the hospital did fine with their date. We're not, I don't think we're, I don't, they can speak for themselves, I'm not sure, but it did seem like we were struggling with that yesterday. I think that was, that went smoothly.
Are they regulating the monoclonal infusion still? Or do we have a lot of those?
No, I think it's still, I think it's, the emails, I don't read a ton about it because I don't order it and am not involved in it. And it's a little unfortunate because if people don't tell me they had it, we have to know you had it because you can't get vaccinated for ninety days after it. But the latest email that I just quickly looked and deleted because it's not, doesn't need to be on my playlist, saying that they were still doing, you still have to allocate and trying to figure out who gets what. Yeah. I think we've had a large portion of our people who have gone in. I think quite a few people have been treated.
I, I had that. The day I found out, I had it. I did, I had it very mild sometimes.
Yeah, I, I, I think a lot of people are.
And I think that was actually created by a doctor out of Rogue Valley. So it worked, I know it worked, so.
Right, yeah, I've heard a couple people say it's, they've done really well with it. And, you know, it is what it is. I wish I could sit and read and, and, and educate myself more than what I can, but I can't. And it's one of the things you pick and choose and it's not on my plate. So I, I don't know a lot about it, unfortunately.
Early this summer, we were at about thirty-four percent for the candy vaccinated.
We're at forty-two point six, not that I ever watch.
Who's counting?
Who's counting? Yeah, we're still the lowest. We're still, we're at forty-two point six, I believe. Hospital, gosh, I read in an email. We were maybe at sixty percent for hospital staff. That, I could be very wrong in that, but that seems to stick in my head. Schools so far are doing okay. It was a really rough start. We were really stretched with staff in the school, but it seems to be leveling out, I think, in the school. We've had some outbreaks. And those are hopefully getting better. Yeah. I mean, I, I hide in my little house over there. I don't get out very much, but it seems, it seems to be calming down. And it seems to be calming down for us. We're just getting used to the new normal and then add. So that, it just never stops, you know? Now we're going to have flu shots plus the booster shots to get through. And so the hospital is, the medical clinic at the hospital is starting to carry the vaccines and I think they'll maybe have them onboard next week. So I'm helping Deborah Marcus as the nurse.
For who?
No, for COVID. And so they're going to carry all three to assist with some hesitancy if people may be coming to public health and there's not a provider there. And feel more comfortable getting it with the physician, you know, in the building. And I think the other thing that'll be very helpful for us is when people want or need their booster to have it when they're in the position instead of leaving and then having to come to public health. So I'm thankful and happy that I have somebody else that's going to start with that. Helping us with that. It just might be able to free us up a team that to do some of our other programs. PE forty-six is a reproductive health program. I think I'm going to have to pause. And because we just, you know, we're just right then. I do have Miranda Philbert on board part-time now. She's hired for three days a week and is still on part-time. She's three to four days a week. So helpful, so lovely, wonderful ladies. Lily's still going up there. And so Ariana's back part-time from having her baby. Daycare, as you know, is a huge struggle. She can't fight a full-time daycare person, so she's working part-time until something happens. And so staffing-wise, we're the best we've been. All since COVID started. Very thankful. Yeah, very thankful.
Just so you, maybe you can explain. When people need proof that they've been vaccinated. What's that process?
If, if anybody who's been vaccinated in Oregon, if the, the site puts the information into the alert system, then we can pull that up and print that out. So it's just an Oregon statewide. We have the cards and if they lose their cards, if they've been vaccinated with us, we're happy to replace cards for people. Oregon is working right now on a digital, on your phone app that you'll be able to use when that's up and going. So that you won't have to carry around the cards. But any, anytime, anybody who's been vaccinated, if I can look it up, I'm happy to give them proof of that. Yeah.
Well. Anything else?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good to see you guys. Good to see you.
Appreciate all you do.
Uh, well, I mean, you know. It's all good. We're, we're just, we, we're optimistic over there. It could be that I have people to look at now in the building. Which makes me happy and not feel alone, but we're, we're doing just fine and, and always appreciate you guys. Just let me know, like I said, if you have follow-up questions, so I can get to Caroline and Brenda and happy to answer those. And if that, I'll just wait to hear from Mel and then I'll let Caroline know that we can move forward. I think we'll have to put that, don't you have a list or something on the county site that says a list of prices possibly? I, I don't know why I'm thinking that.
We used to have your fees on there when you were part of the county.
Oh, so now maybe it's us.
It was you, yeah.
Okay, so we'll update that once we get updates to put on there.
If these guys approve them, I suppose.
Yep, yep. So whatever, whenever. I did my part. I got it over here. I'm a little, I'm a little behind on getting it over.
It now works.
That's okay. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judy.
Have a good day.
You as well.
You too.
Anything else to come across?
Do you guys want to see them though?
Do you want, do we want to act on them today or take them?
Go to regular session tomorrow, no?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh.
So you just wait and you could potentially act on them tomorrow? Okay.
There's more time.
Alright.
Six months.
Just really quickly, as a little update while we were on that subject. Prior with, with Judy. It was in the news late last night that the state of Oregon inadvertently released the names and records of forty thousand state employees and their unvaccinated status.
Were their status period?
Their status period.
Pretty damn thirteen Q.
No, no, the administrative services, external relations director, Adam Crawford, emailed a file to the Oregonian, Oregon Live and the Salem State Men Journal Monday containing vaccination statuses by name for all executive branch employees. So, I was just updating you guys on that. That was my, I wanted to just note that and apologize for my, for myself stepping out of the room earlier. That was Representative Owens calling me on the subject. So, anyway. That's what's probably going to keep me busy for the rest of the day.
You can't tell me that was inadvertent.
No, 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 it was actually, it appears to be extremely intentional. And so the big thing that I think a lot of people were concerned about and feared when they started filling out exemption forms and exception forms was a matter of privacy. And that worst fear has just become a reality because the state of Oregon, in my opinion, cannot be trusted with the privacy of their own employees. So with that being said, and nothing else to become before us until tomorrow. We will have our regular session at ten o'clock and and then again, we'll have our Blue Marlin hearing tomorrow at four. So.
So can we talk a little bit before you adjourn?
Yeah, sure.
I didn't realize the, the governor's office responded to our resolution, I guess, or declaration, whatever we called it.
Resolution.
Uh, we did.
Yeah.
So, did they respond to ours specifically or to all counties?
To all counties, but.
So they had response to city, no?
So this was my misunderstanding. When I first read it, it was an email that was sent out after closing businesses, a business last week. From Leah Horner, the governor's office. And I read it and I was distraught, to say the least, but it was the email began, began with, dear commissioners, and I took that as addressing us. And so I thought that you had all seen the email as well. And upon looking at it closer on Sunday, I realized that it was actually only sent to the chairs of the individual counties, but all the counties. And the reason I was somewhat irritated was because when I first read it, thinking that it was just us here in Lake County and the commissioners here. And in the second paragraph where Leah says she wants to make it clear that we could extend this mandate to our own employees on the, at the county level, the same as the state did. I was thinking to myself, are you? Are you deaf? Have you not been listening to anything that we've said? We said that we're not going to do specifically that because for me personally, I feel that it was, that the state made that decision in error. But when I realized that she had sent it to all the other counties, I felt somewhat better about it, but I also realized that you, neither of you had seen it. So I forwarded on to you yesterday to make sure that you were able to review what the state actual response was. And the fact that there was not going to be any exclusion process for the other counties and no exceptions. So.
So we're a day after the governor's deadline. Sure be nice to hear from the hospital. Where they're at. I know we kind of heard from Judy there. Well, they accepted all, all of the exemptions. And my, my daughter. And the school, also that I'm aware of.
So what's hanging out there is the ones that didn't fill out or didn't give vaccine.
My concern is, you know. If the state says they can't accept or won't accept exemptions, then we're going to be in a very bad place.
If they come back later and decide that they're not going to accept an exception form, and it's not even just the hospital from our prison, obviously, you know, I'd like to have an update on that.
Yeah, our police force.
Well, we haven't extended that mandate to them, but.
What I'm saying is, is that.
So they haven't had to fill those out.
If, if they make it mandatory, no exemptions accepted. The reason why I'm saying this is because Assante and Rogue Valley Hospital didn't, they, they accepted the exemptions, but they laid everybody off with, I'm like. That filled out. And so four hundred and sixty-two employees at that hospital alone left. And my daughter called last night in tears. She said, it's crazy. I mean, the whole place is a different place. Everybody strapped, everybody. And so one of their other requirements was all contractors, electrical, plumbing, blah, 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 has to be vaccinated. And so. My fear for that is, is that we fly a lot of people to these hospitals when it's out of our hands. And are people going to get the care that they deserve, you know? And so. If I'm correct, St. Charles and then did the same. And so. We can use this as an opportunity. There's a lot of healthcare workers that need work now. I think our hospital needs to say, we'll give you an exemption, you have to work for us.
Fill those vacancies that they have, you know, and have had long before even this.
But the thing is, is that I'm worried about, I'm really worried about our EMS people. They keep pushing this. But what's going to happen is, is that they've closed down three urgent care facilities in Rogue Valley already. We're going to see some really bad things, is what I'm thinking. And so I'm just really concerned about it. I think we gotta think about when, when and if that tide comes, what we're going to do.
We have to stay on top of it.
So. It's, it's a sad day for me. So.
Again, my apologies for not getting that email to you guys sooner. I would have sent it on Friday if I realized that it didn't get to you, but.
Fine, I apologize for that and stuff. I, that's all I can do with these.
Well, that's all you do anyway. Just kidding.
Anyways.
Alright, um, thank you guys and given nothing else coming before us and nothing else on the agenda. Uh, the time is eleven eight. We will go ahead and adjourn today's work session.